Good evening and welcome. I call to order the June 12th, 2014 meeting of the City of Bellingham Planning and Development Commission and ask everyone to silence their electronic devices. So if you've got something that whores, beeps, talks at you, sings, or anything else, you know, put it on silent running or turn it off, please. Heather, would you please call or roll?
Tom Grunstad.
Here.
Jeff Brown.
Here.
Garrett O'Brien.
Here.
Phyllis McKee.
Here.
Sarice Noah.
Here.
Steve Crooks.
Here.
And Ali Taghe is excused.
Thank you. First on the agenda tonight is approval of previous meetings minutes. We had minutes from both the April 3rd and May 1st meetings to approve. I trust that each and every one of you read them and are willing to step up. So can we have a motion for the April 3rd minutes?
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from April 3rd, 2014. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And next would be the approval of the May 1st minutes. Again, is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the May 1st minutes, 2014. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the public comment period. This is the time when the public can come forth and speak to the commission about anything you want to other than the issue before us tonight. So if you want to talk about global warming, or your favorite hip-hop band, or, you know, whatever you'd like for three minutes on public television, well, not public television, city television, whatever it's called, Channel 10, the floor is yours. Is there anyone who wants to address the commission tonight? Seeing nothing? No one, we'll close the public comment period. The next is the main item for discussion tonight. It's the public hearing, consideration of a docketed, comprehensive, and neighborhood plan amendment, as well as an alternative proposal to rezone the properties formerly owned by the Washington State Department of Transportation within areas 1, 1A, and 8 of the Sunnyland neighborhood. Now, in the interest of full disclosure, I'm going to say that I have known and worked with on various projects, one of the owners of the property, and I've known him for approximately 30 years. But that should have no bearing on this, since this is a legislative process. So I guess Darby, you're leading off with the thing tonight, right?
All right, let's get to it. If we can. My name is Darby Coles. I'm a senior planner with the Planning and Community Development Department. And we're here tonight, as the commissioner mentioned, to talk about the Sunnyland Department of Transportation site. And, oh, well, yeah, we'll get it started. The site is four acres located in the Sunnyland neighborhood. It was previously owned by the Department of Transportation. And I think we'll pause just for a minute to see if we can get the visuals up here. My presentation will be probably 10 minutes, so I won't take too much time into the public hearing. Well, if we can't move past our technical difficulties, we'll just talk and look at the packet. So we'll give it another minute and it's always nice to be looking at the same thing if we can. Oh, okay. Okay, let's do this again.
I bet you were on the AV committee in high school, weren't you?
I'll try not to mess it up when I open it. Technology can always be such a wonderful thing and such a hindrance, it seems like. The X-Drive pop-up. Not, I can just do it. Okay, thank you all for your patience. As I mentioned, I'm Darby Coles with the Planning Department, and we're here tonight to talk about the Sunnyland Department of Transportation site, which is four acres, about four acres, located in the Sunnyland neighborhood. And it was previously owned by the Washington State Department of Transportation. For a time, there was a conditional use permit to operate a park-and-ride on the site. And during the time that it was owned by a public organization, most of the property was zoned public, except for a few pieces under the same ownership which were located in the single-family zones. In 2007, the property was purchased by Sunset Commons LLC, sold out of public ownership. And the Bellingham Municipal Code has a provision that requires that any property sold that was previously zoned public automatically reverts to residential single 20,000 square feet per unit, which is the lowest intensity development that the city has. And that's purposeful so that the community and the city can go through a legislative process to determine what the most appropriate zoning is for the property. So that happened back in 2007. The property is bordered by Sunset Drive to the north and Illinois Street to the south. There are several churches in the vicinity, single-family residences across Sunset and the majority of the Sunnyland neighborhood. There's some transit, shown in yellow, WTA lines that run in close proximity, also a few elementary schools, parks, employment center, and some retail. So it's really unusual, as you know, you're probably more familiar than anyone, of the very few sites in the city of this size that don't have wetlands, don't have streams, and existing services and infrastructure like this. So it really is kind of a blank slate to be able to do something cool and interesting. And this could be a wide range of options. I mean, should the property be developed to the maximum infill capacity with high-story multifamily, like what you'd see in Old Town, or in Downtown, or in Happy Valley? Or should it be low-density, single-family, which sometimes comes with its own limitations with design and with the scale? We don't regulate single-family residences the way that we do some types of other uses. So there's a wide range, and then there's a whole slew of options in between these kind of two extremes. And since 2007, there have been a number of attempts to try to define what that option should be. Proposals have been submitted by the property owner, they've been submitted by the neighborhood, and by the planning staff, and there's been a lot of discussion, and I think, in some cases, some frustration, and on both sides, just a lot of challenges. There was a charrette, a design charrette, that happened back in 2008 that there wasn't a conclusion. So it's been going on for a while, and I think people on all sides are getting kind of frustrated with what are we going to do with this property? What's appropriate for here? From the letters that we've received and the conversation that some of the other staff has had, the neighbors and the neighborhood are pretty worried and concerned about the effect that the wrong kind of development could have on the neighborhood. The property owner wants to make sure that they get a reasonable return on their investment, and also that there's predictability and consistency, that's what we're assuming that they would like to have. And then the planning staff is trying to negotiate both sides while also looking at our comprehensive plan goals, which I think the other stakeholders are too, but there's just a lot at play here. The comprehensive plan goals, they're outlined in great detail in the packet, it's Attachment 3, page 30. But in summary, some of them are to accommodate population growth through infill, support environmentally and fiscally responsible development, so when we look at existing infrastructure and infill sites, that's an important consideration, providing a variety of housing types and sizes to meet emerging trends in demographics, different lifestyles, and affordable housing, and then, of course, compatibility with neighborhood character. And what a neighborhood character we have in Sunnyland. There's been a lot of reinvestment in this neighborhood in recent years. There's a really good, well-established housing stock with some great architecture. When you walk around the neighborhood, there's little artistic details that have been incorporated into people's neighborhoods. I saw half the yards have been converted into gardens. There's dogs and chickens and kids running around, and events like the Sunnyland Stomp, which I think really encapsulate the community spirit of the neighborhood. So it's a really cool place, and it has a lot of interesting details going for it. So these are part of the pieces that inform the discussion. And since 2007, the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association has given this a lot of consideration, including significant outreach and public input. And they developed a set of principles that reflect areas of strong consensus that the neighborhood came up with, based on some feedback and discussion that they had. And they developed a rezone proposal that was docketed by city council. And this is the topic that's under review this evening, is the neighborhood's docketed proposal. It is pretty unusual to have a proposal docketed by a neighborhood instead of a property owner. We don't see that very often, but the city council has the authority to do that. And in the meantime, staff has been working on reviewing previous efforts and also the current proposal under consideration. And we believe we've come up with some commonalities, or at least some points that we can probably all agree on. I can't speak for everyone, but these are some common themes that we saw when we were reviewing previous efforts. One, I think most people agree, 20,000 square feet per unit is not an appropriate density for this neighborhood. Additionally, the properties that are owned in common should be rezoned under one zoning designation so that they can be developed in one complete package. Generally, lot sizes less than 5,000 square feet or at 5,000 square feet may be appropriate, with some exceptions depending on the housing type, which we could get into here in a little bit. There's a desire for through connections, bicycles and pedestrians being able to get through. It's a major super block, so being able to get through from Illinois to Sunset on foot or bike is desired. But prohibiting vehicular through access is something that's kind of been a theme so that you aren't getting drive-through vehicle traffic from the arterial. And also, a promotion of a variety of small-scale housing types that are compatible with a single-family neighborhood. The comp plan also contains several goals related to administration and development of regulations. It says that development regulations should be organized, easy to administer, and provide predictability and consistency. So staff considers that the alternative proposal be the minimum acceptable infill alternative that unites the commonalities of the stakeholders, provides a reasonable development opportunity for the property owner, and adopts elements of the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association proposal to the best possible extent in the context of the comprehensive plan goals and desire for new regulations that are clear and easy to administer. So what I'd like to do for the next few slides is kind of go through the docketed proposal and the staff alternative in a little bit more detail, so we can kind of see where they align and where they differ, and why staff has proposed some alternatives for discussion. The first one is the zoning designation. And the docketed proposal is for a residential single detached/attached designation. The staff recommendation is for residential multiple duplex designation. And when we say residential multiple, you think back to this picture. This is not what we're talking about. No. The reason that staff is recommending residential multiple duplex designation is because, first of all, residential single detached zoning generally does not allow for a mix of uses. It's pretty straightforward about that. Also, the RM duplex designation allows for some low-intensity housing units under an existing section of the code. This avoids creating a mini zoning code for one little property where you're trying to encapsulate all the desires by making specific requirements. We have an existing section that we think will address some of the considerations. Also, the zoning designation is consistent with Area 4 of the neighborhood. It's to the southeast along James Street. That's an RM duplex designation. And then the density, the docketed proposal is 6,250 square feet per unit. That means for every 6,250 square feet of property, you get one unit. Staff is recommending 5,000 square feet per unit. And in practicality, this is a difference of six units. This is not a major infill question as far as these two numbers go. It's not going to solve our infill problems to get six more units. Staff would be comfortable with a higher density than this if there's restrictions on the permitted uses, and there's design standards and things like that. But the recommendation is for 5,000 square feet per unit, because that's what the density is in the surrounding higher-density, single neighborhood to the south. It's single-family, 5,000 square feet per unit, so it kind of fits into that existing Regarding permitted uses, if you look at page 76 of your packet, it's the first page of the Infill Housing Toolkit, and I think there might be copies for people in the audience too. Under Applicability, Section A, the last sentence says, "In the residential multi-duplex zone, only small house, smaller house, cottage, detached accessory dwelling unit, carriage house, and duplex are permitted." The Infill Housing Toolkit, there were a number, dozens if not hundreds, of people that were involved, maybe some of you, in the creation of this document. It was a pretty expansive public process that talked about character of existing neighborhoods, the types of housing that would be appropriate for infill. And there's really specific design standards and regulations for each one of these housing types, which I'm going to go through here in a second. But it was identified that those types of housing units would be more appropriate for the smaller scale, not the entire infill toolkit, which staff doesn't believe would be totally appropriate for this site. So we're looking towards that for a set of existing regulations, and you'll see, it's pretty close to the docket. The docketed proposal recommends single-family detached, which would be included in the staff alternative. And the docketed proposal also would allow for attached ADUs, which the staff alternative would also allow, but would include detached as well, and carriage houses, which are these style with the unit above the garage. We mentioned cottage housing, which is a series of small, single-family, either on one lot or a group of lots, and then, single-family attached or duplex. So that's reflecting similarities. So going through the housing types in a little bit more detail, the first one that would be recommended is the single-family detached. And in the toolkit, there's reference to small and smaller house. And you'll see this in page 80 and 85 in the packet. It has specific lot sizes between 1,800 square feet and 5,000 square feet, but the thing that we like about the toolkit is that it has restrictions based on those lot sizes. So in standard, single-family zones, you could build up to 5,500 square feet, three stories, that sort of thing. The toolkit limits the amount of square footage, requires 60% landscaped open space, which standard, single-family would too. Then it also has a height limit of 25 feet versus the single-family development regulations, which are 35, so it has a little bit more limited scale. There's specific design standards. I won't go through all of them, but it's things like pitched roofs, front porches, limitations on fencing height, private front and backyards, limiting the impact of garages and parking, public entrances facing the street, things like that. And we really don't want to go down the road of applying these type of design standards in single-family zones, because it kind of sets a precedent. It's really appropriate for an infill site to have these level of design standards. The second housing type is associated with single-family detached, because you have to have them linked to a house. And those are the accessory dwellings and the carriage houses that I mentioned. This example, which I think is really cool, is actually about a half a block away from the site. This is in Bellingham. And I mentioned the carriage house is an accessory unit above a garage. These, in the toolkit, require an alley access, a secondary access, or a parcel greater than 10,000 square feet. One of the units needs to be owner-occupied, and there's a limit of 800 square feet, or 40% of the size of the main structure. There are similar design standards to the ones that you'd see for the small and smaller lot with the gabled roofs, a height less than 25 feet or less than the main structure, depending which is lower, having a separate entrance, similar architectural features, orientation to the street, and staggered windows to minimize impacts to privacy. And you'll see more of those details in the packet. The duplex designation has design standards as well, and I think sometimes, when you hear duplex, it's a similar reaction that people sometimes have to hearing the word multifamily, where you have a picture in your head of like a box with two doors on it. The toolkit also has a size limit based on lot size and the 25-foot height limit, 40% open space, front entrances, gabled roofs, minimization of garage impacts, that sort of thing. Single-family attached, which is also referenced, is the same as a duplex. It's just where you would draw a property line down the shared wall. So, single-family attached isn't called out in the toolkit, but that's something that staff would definitely support, because it offers opportunities for homeownership. So, and they're already allowed in our code in duplex zones, but it's something that we would want to note for this, for this situation. And then, finally, cottage housing, which is a grouping of small, compact, detached, single-family dwelling units clustered around a common area, and developed with a shared plan for access and parking, and a coordinated designs for buildings and sites. So these can either be on separate lots or on a common parcel. The toolkit restricts a minimum of eight cottages on that development site. It contains, again, size and floor limits that are appropriate for that style, private and common open space, 60% landscaping, consolidating parking away from the street, front porches, and that it must blend architecturally into the existing neighborhood. So that's a summary of the proposed housing types, and staff believes that reiterating or developing new standards and regulations for specific housing forms for one parcel just doesn't improve usability for citizens or staff. And the work was already done in the toolkit for these housing types. So in conclusion, the property represents an extraordinary opportunity. There's been a lot of discussion. I think it's time for us to get down to the nitty-gritty and make a decision one way or the other. And staff believes that the alternative proposal in your packet honors the most important elements of the docketed Sunnyland proposal, while applying the most reasonable, clear, and consistent development regulations for clarity and ease of administration. And it will ensure the development of an appropriate scale and architectural character on the property, while also allowing for some infill opportunities. So we recommend approval of the rezone, according to staff's analysis and the proposal outlined in your staff report. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the commission regarding this presentation? No? Okay. We have one, two, seven people who have signed up to come and speak to us tonight. First is Casey Diggs, then...
I was promised 15 minutes to present the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association Plan Proposal to the Planning Commission, separate from the public comment period.
Thank you, Patrick. You didn't let me get through what I was going to say, but I was...
I started to talk to you, I thought you were going right into the public comment period.
No. I was going to say that we have seven people, starting with you, since you are the representative of the neighborhood, and you have approximately 15 minutes to present the neighborhood proposal. And then it will be Casey Diggs, and Donnie Shay, Amanda Feutz, Bill Guyer, David Rogers, and Judith Green. So, Patrick, it's up to you.
I am currently serving as the board chairman of the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association. The Sunnyland Neighborhood Association has gone through a very long public process to get here tonight. This is the third Bellingham Planning Commission meeting at which the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association-proposed amendment has been on the agenda. The first time we came to the Planning Commission meeting was in 2011. The Planning Commission recommended denying our request for docketing consideration. One of the Planning Commission's reasons was that we did not have the property owner's approval for docketing consideration. On October 24th, 2011, the city council rejected the Planning Committee recommendation and voted seven to nothing to grant the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association proposal docketing consideration. This was followed by another city council vote on July 23rd, 2012. The council rejected a multifamily DOT site rezone proposal. The Council rejected a multifamily DOT site rezone proposal from Sunset Commons LLC. The City Council rejected a single-family rezone proposal of the DOT site that was proposed by the Planning Department. And by a vote of four to three, the City Council placed the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association proposal on the annual docket for consideration in 2012 and 2013. We have been waiting since July 23rd, 2013, I'm sorry, 2012, for this Planning Commission meeting. Bellingham Municipal Code Title 21 stipulates that the Planning Commission can recommend denying our proposal, the Planning Commission can recommend approving our proposal, or the Planning Commission can recommend approving our proposal with modifications. What you cannot do is consider a new alternative proposal drawn up by Planning Department staff, a proposal which has never been shown at a pre-application neighborhood meeting, a proposal which was never docketed by the City Council for consideration, a site-specific proposal which was never approved by the property owner. After our proposal was docketed in 2012, Planning Department staff never met with the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association Board to discuss a modification of our proposal. Staff simply wrote their own new proposal. The alternative proposal proposed by the Planning Department is a multifamily proposal. The SNA proposal is a single-family proposal. From the beginning, one of the main goals of the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association was to keep this area zoned for single-family use, and to stop the introduction of multifamily zoning into this part of Sunnyland. The Planning Department is taking an applicant's proposed amendment and turning it into something the applicant never intended. The Planning Department is misusing the amendment process to make changes to the comprehensive plan, which were never docketed by the City Council. The Planning Department alternative proposal should be dropped from this agenda tonight. The Sunnyland proposal, which was docketed for your consideration tonight, is a proposal to amend the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan and create a rezone of the former public-use site, which we know as the DOT site, but which is Area 8 in the Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan. We would like to rezone Area 8 residential, single, medium-density for single-family detached homes. The Sunnyland Neighborhood Plan is an innovative, forward-looking plan. There are no rigid fixed lot sizes. Density is described in dwelling units per square feet, prior to any dedication of land for public purposes. This is intended to provide maximum flexibility and efficiency in lot design. After Area 8 is improved with roads and sidewalks, defined lots may range somewhere between 3,600 square feet and 5,000 square feet. Our proposal requires that only small and smaller, single-family homes be built on the site. Hopefully, this will result in affordable housing. Attached ADUs are permitted on the site. And the proposal offers the possibility of attached owner-occupied, single-family homes along Sunset Drive. No staff time or expense will be needed to create the proposed Design Overlay District in this area. Design standards for single-family homes will be borrowed from BMC 2028-060 and 070. The language from that code will be transferred to the Special Regulations Column in the zoning code, the zoning table for Area 8 in the Sunnyland Neighborhood. The Sunnyland proposal currently permits only, single-family detached homes. However, the proposal foresees a time in the future where the City Council might approve an attached use qualifier for the residential, single, general-use type. If this does occur in the future, we would restrict attached, single-family houses, as I said, to a 150-foot wide strip along Sunset Drive. This provision will be noted in the prerequisite conditions column of the zoning table that applies to Area 8 of the Sunnyland Neighborhood. More than half of the Sunnyland Neighborhood residential area is currently zoned residential, multifamily, duplex. All of those toolkit housing forms which you just saw displayed, the duplex, the cottage housing, the carriage housing, the detached ADUs are currently possible in more than half the residential area of Sunnyland. Also, nearby Sunnyland, there is what is known as the Old Town area. The city has spent a lot of money planning for multifamily development in the Old Town area. There is the potential for hundreds of multifamily housing units in the Old Town area. There is the nearby Fountain District area, which is also planned for multifamily use. Multifamily use will occur in the downtown area and on the waterfront. There is no shortage of areas where we can develop multifamily housing. There is, however, a shortage of land available to build new, small, single-family homes. This is an acute shortage, especially in older center-city neighborhoods. The Sunnyland proposal fills a need that the market is crying out for. With the land that the owner owns, which abuts the former public-use site, the total area available is four acres, and we estimate that we could allow the construction with the Sunnyland proposal of 28 new, small, single-family homes, exactly what the market is looking for. I hope you will give our proposal fair consideration tonight. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, now, next up is Casey Diggs, and then Donnie Shea.
Can I pose a question, or not? Oh, that's true. Why do we keep referring to it as the property formerly owned by the Washington State Department of Transportation, instead of saying what it actually is? It feels like we're skirting around, and we don't want to say that it's owned by Sunset Commons. And I don't really feel that that's okay. I, I kinda, I'm going to read this. "A few weeks ago, I got a letter in the mail saying the property formerly owned by the Washington State Department of Transportation was up for rezoning. Now, why do I care who used to own the property? I don't. I care who owns it now. You know, what's really scary to me is that this letter makes me feel that the city is not being honest with me. Why did this letter not say who actually owns the property? Could it be because the developer has a stigma around them? Could it be because of mistakes the city has made in the past? I truly hope that this was an honest oversight by the city, or whoever mailed me the letter. I feel with some transparency and some great dialogue, we could really do some great things in Sunnyland. I liked what you had to say, Darby. I just wish that it was, everybody knew whose property this was, and, and things that they've done in the past, we've done in the past. And as long as it's a good, you know, developer and a good construction company that's doing the work, I think that we should go with it. But I just want everybody to know whose property it really is." So, thanks.
And then Amanda, after him.
Thank you. My wife and I have written a letter to the Planning Commission, and my only question is, knowing that the current default zoning would add 28 houses, what is the approximate infill proposing at this time?
The current zoning designation of 20,000 square feet per unit wouldn't get to the 28. It would get about six units. So, the proposal that the Sunnyland Neighborhood has docketed would be the 28 units, and the one that the staff alternative to that would be about 34.
34.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Amanda Feitz, and I'm here to testify in support of the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association Plan for the Lot. I'm a first-time homeowner. I just moved into the Sunnyland area. I'm actually on Sunset Drive. So this development, it really affected me every step of the way, from groundbreaking through construction, through the final product. My house sits directly across from the empty lot, so my living room window stares at the lot every day. So that's my current view. So whatever goes in there would be my future view. Because I'm new to the neighborhood, unfortunately, I haven't been able to be involved in the Neighborhood Association discussions. And because I am on the other side of Sunset, I actually believe I'm technically in the Cornwall Park neighborhood. So I'm not aware of a lot of the stuff that Sunnyland does because of being new and for that case. So I haven't been involved in the surveys and the meetings and stuff of that nature. But obviously, I'm supporting their efforts, not only for the aesthetics reasons that I just mentioned, but mostly because of traffic. Because I do sit on Sunset Drive right there. My driveway backs right out onto Sunset. It's already very, very tough to get out of my driveway most of the time. Certain parts of the day, I end up waiting several minutes to get out of my driveway. Certain parts of the day, too, I can see from my living room window that the traffic backs up from the intersection at the freeway, past my house, which I'm about halfway in between both intersections. And even other parts of the day, it backs up between one intersection by the freeway, all the way to the other intersection by the hospital at Ellis Street. I think that has to do, obviously, with maybe shift changes at the hospital. It's not a norm, but it's still, obviously, for people who live along that street, is very inconvenient. So my biggest concern would be the traffic, the traffic issues that would come with the development. I'm in support of the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association recommendation for that. The only part that I kind of differ from their proposal is because I do sit right on Sunset, I'm not in favor of the attached housing that they, I think, I don't, I read in somebody's public comments that they say they made a concession to allow them within 150 feet of Sunset Drive, because that's right where my house is. I would, I'd be more in favor of the single-family homes along Sunset as well, stuff that would mirror what we have on my side of the street. But all in all, I would be in favor of the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association Plan versus the one staff is proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Now, Bill Guyer, and then David Rogers.
Heather, is this still locked? Okay. Give me just a minute. I wanted to get a screen up here, and I'm going to hand a document to the commissioners and to the clerk.
Hopefully, it didn't crash out again.
Display button, that's right. Forgot that. Okay. That's okay. I can, I can wait a little bit. Okay. I'll work from the printed material, so we can go put the lights back up, so we can... Pardon? No, that's okay. The commissioners have it. For the record, Bill Guyer, owner, president, Guyer and Associates, 1008 16th Street. Also, just for the record, accredited by the American Institute of Certified Planners. And I've been in the planning and development field as a professional planner for about too long, 37, 38 years now. Couple things procedurally I wanted to mention to the commissioners before I go into some of the substance, and I trust that you have seen the previous letter we placed into your record. It's in the packet that you received. Planning commissioners, you know that you're here for a reason, and that's primarily to be the citizen oversight to the development regulations in this community, and to guide the implementation of our comprehensive plan, and to protect citizen participation as we look at these issues. This is tantamount in the subject tonight. Yes, there is a long history, and I am here on behalf of Sunset Commons LLC to reflect on that briefly, but most specifically to ask you to take specific action tonight. There has been, as others have stated tonight, and the report shows, over the years, some analysis on this location, the site, and I agree with the first speaker, this is the Sunset Commons LLC site, that is the ownership, and looked at in various alternatives of what could occur. And these are verbalized discussions, charrette sessions, they are not formal applications. And it was correctly cited that there were docketing proposals that came through this body and then to council, City Council, which then chose unanimously to not accept the docketing proposal that Sunset Commons had, and also to turn down the staff proposal, but on a four to three vote, bring forth what's coming to you now. And that was in July 2012. Since that time, since that turned down the council's decision, there has not been any further action or discussion officially to an application for a rezone amendment by Sunset Commons. What was particularly interesting was in March of this year, the principals at Sunset Commons LLC, which is a registered corporation, state of Washington, it's the Edelstein family and the Hinton family, four individuals, husband and wife, two, two of them. And in March of this year, they requested a meeting with the director, Mr. Thomas, to discuss what sort of options could be pursued. The staff said that they would get back to them, and they would make an appointment. That appointment never occurred. That response never occurred. We saw notice of the hearing, of this tonight's hearing, that the city had sent out. The unfortunate part is, Mr. Edelstein, who's the principal in Sunset Commons LLC, had previously scheduled a long, extended vacation with his wife. Now, I would much rather be on a vacation than in a Planning Commission meeting with my spouse, as I'm sure you all would be too. And you could imagine, you cannot change those types of longstanding arrangements. And he left town on May 28. That's significant, because in March, as we made requests, as they made requests, prior to me being engaged by them to discuss this, those discussions did not occur. I was brought to attention on this in that late part of May, and I requested from the director that we meet and give consideration to postponing this meeting until July, when Mr. Edelstein returns. They graciously met with me, we discussed, and Mr. Thomas said, no, that the commissioners will proceed with this hearing. One of the key problems here, procedurally still, is that the SEPA checklist that was prepared for this site was authored by staff, routed and reviewed by various agencies that they normally do. But that checklist, and you know the basis of a checklist, what it's for, it's disclosure and discovery, that checklist was never sent to Sunset Commons. Sunset Commons was not given the opportunity to provide any information in the basic checklist itself. When you look at the... When you look at the mailing list that's on file in this subject case, Sunset Commons LLC does not appear on that mailing list. You look at the certified list of who received that checklist, Sunset Commons is not on that mailing list. That's a problem. That's a major problem. When we had our discussions with, when I met with the director and Mr. Awkutt, we had a very good discussion on various pieces about this proposal, on, I believe it was June 2nd, but you see, the comment period for the SEPA checklist ended May 30. Mr. Edelstein was already out of town, so he could not look at the items in detail, provide his expertise and commentary, and many of the commissioners know, he sat on this body for close to, it was either 12 to 14 years, it was forever, a couple decade, decade or so ago. So, that's problematic as to the checklist. So, we've gone forward. So, I want to transition to the substantive piece of my testimony tonight. I have a question to each commissioner. This is not rhetorical, it's, it's very direct to put a framework around what's being proposed this evening. Do we wish to have a land use and development process in Bellingham whereby your individual property, your individual home, can be isolated, have a boundary drawn around it, zoning proposed just for your property without your engagement to look at the substance of what's being applied for, and proceed to a hearing when you're out of town? Should the City of Bellingham specifically have the authority to isolate a property of one owner and the staff define what the zoning should be? That is what is before you tonight. The letter that I've handed out to the commissioners this evening, and a copy to the staff, goes through several findings, and I will briefly go through them, and I went to this level of detail to assist, because the first speaker tonight was, was correct. This is the Sunset Commons LLC site, it's not the Wash dot site. But specifically, you'll note in there that we've attached the deed from the auditor's file referenced in my letter, quitclaim deed that creates the ownership of this lot, these, of this property in 2007 to Sunset Commons, with the four parcels that are assigned to it. So, it gives the legal definition of the parcels, the deed defines it. When you look at the SEPA checklist that I've also attached as Exhibit B to my letter, it has the exact same property definition. When you look at the map that the staff has provided in your packet, it has the exact same property definition. Well, Bill, what does that mean? Well, why is that important? Because the legal definition of the site you are pursuing, or looking at, is one owner, one specific site. There are not adjoining property owners. Finding number one, and I think we can all stipulate, Sunset Commons is the sole owner of this specific site. Well, now, when you look at the BMC, the municipal code, 21.10.150... I can pull that plug and go. B, 150B, it says, and it's in the letter, the amendments, that is zoning amendments, neighborhood amendments, they can be divided into two categories, site-specific and non-site-specific, to the one or the other. We've already shown there's one owner to this, and you go to the definition of what is a site-specific amendment? This is the controlling document right here. It's subparagraph B, and the definition, site-specific amendments, only, I stress, my emphasis, only a property owner or authorized agent of the property owner, of the property owner may submit an application to have a site-specific amendment to the comprehensive plan. Only the property owner. Sunset Commons LLC is the only owner of this property, there are no others. Sunset Commons LLC is the only entity that can make application for this. Now, on this point, I will agree with what the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association has testified, that the staff's proposal should be terminated. Yes, for these reasons first and foremost. The staff is not authorized to draw a line around your property, define the zoning that you should have, and take through the process. They are not the owners. And the code was written specifically to prohibit this type of activity where things could run astray, because it's the property owner's obligation and risk. For the many cases I've been before you, you know that's, it's an expensive proposition, but it's the property owner's burden of proof to show to you why the rezone should be pursued. In this case, we don't have any of that. So, finding number two, this subject proposal is a site-specific amendment that is completely contrary and negates the opening statement of page one, line one of the staff's report to you tonight, that this is an area-wide rezone. This is, there is no such thing as an area-wide rezone, I just read the definition to you. You either have site-specific or non-site-specific. This is site-specific. Ladies and gentlemen, the, the definition, the basic definition of this proposal is absolutely incorrect and non-compliant. The code goes on, that the application, this is 150B, where the application is, a complete application shall consist of the submitted requirements established by the director and stated on the application forms. Those in the trade were aware what these are. The staff report in pages 14 and 15 shows the docketing, underscore docketing application by the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association, and they've listed the property owner, but I would note, the information they're providing to you, if you look what's on page two of my letter at the bottom, what is the header to that information that they've provided? It is, "Complete the following sections if the proposal includes a site-specific amendment to a comprehensive plan, land use designation." In other words, their docketing application, different from the rezone, their docketing application essentially says it's site-specific as well. Now, SNA, Sunnyland Neighborhood Association, is not a signatory to the property, they're not an owner, and they are also not the property owner's signatory on this docketing proposal. SNA did not submit the required application, the fees, and the various forms that go along with any application that anybody else in the city of Bellingham must submit. So, finding three, the SNA application does not comply with the municipal code. You go into the further provisions in the, the SEPA checklist, and you'll note that that is where it first identifies who is the applicant. Now, with all due respect to Moshe, he does great work, and I've worked with him before. He's the representative of the department, so I read this, as it says, name of applicant, Mr. Moshe Quinn is there, but he notes it's a planning community development department, so I have to surmise it is the corporate entity, the city of Bellingham, its department that has now defined itself as the applicant. Please, someone define that for me in a specific code citation where the director of planning is authorized to do that. As the former director of this department, albeit some time ago, and as an active professional in this community, I can attest that that right does not exist. It does not exist, in my professional opinion. The case file does not contain the completed forms, and the city is not in the ownership position on the site, nor are they authorized to be an agent for Sunset Commons. And you're looking at me saying, okay, those are kind of obvious statements. Well, yes, they are, but I, it's necessary, given the history of the site, to make that statement. So, finding four, the city's application does not comply with the BMC. So, the only authorized entity is Sunnyland, excuse me, Sunset Commons LLC. In the case file, there is a docketing application from previously, and the commissioners are aware, this is for the audience, the docketing application is the initial phase, that's the idea, to go to the council whether it should be considered. It is not a full, complete application until the application form and fees are paid, as I previously read. Neither of those, neither the rezone neighborhood plan amendment signed by Sunset Commons, nor the fees, nor SEPA checklist, nor pre-application meeting of neighborhood, none of those have occurred by Sunset Commons for a proposed neighborhood plan amendment. So, there is no rezone neighborhood plan amendment application by Sunset Commons. SNA's application, not compliant, city of Bellingham, not compliant, Sunset Commons, null set, does not exist. Why are we here? So, I get to the punchline of my letter to you and our request, is based on these facts and the findings above, and the other testimony that you have in the record. We specifically request that the planning commissioners adopt the findings of our letter and the conclusions, that is, this is not a bona fide application, that you terminate, terminate the proposed amendment, rezone application, and three, you remand this issue, you send it back to the staff in perpetuity, forever, until it's such time that the property owner comes forward with his properly completed application form and the fees paid. Now, I started this by saying that you are on the front line of seeing that our comprehensive plan gets implemented, and you're also on the front line for citizen participation, and we, we honor the people that are here tonight of their own time to speak. But, again, where is it in the code that permits staff to draw a line around your property, isolate you from all other properties, define the zoning that should be attached to your property? Where does that exist in the Bellingham municipal code? Please provide me the citation. Absent that, Sunset Commons LLC requests that you terminate this application. Their interest is as yours, is to see if this site meets a, a very functional role for an infill development site within the city of Bellingham. Given the present case, though, they are not prepared this evening to make substantive commentary as to the merits of what is being proposed in the density or other things. I'll be here if you have other questions, and as a representative of the property owner, I would request from the chair, should any short rebuttal, less than two minutes be required, I would ask for that opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. David Rogers is next, and then Judith Green.
Good evening. David Rogers, and I am a property owner adjacent to the property right there. I'll be a next-door neighbor, watching things happen, and I'm also newly on the, on the SNA board. And alls I really have to, to say is that I just, you know, as a property owner sitting next door, my main concern is, it doesn't seem like there's any regulations saying that the owner can just fill it up with duplexes, rent it all out, and pretty much, that would be outside the characteristic of our immediate neighborhood, and I guess, since I'm new to all this and learning, I'd love to be enlightened if that's actually possible, that they could do this, and what kind of guarantees do we, do we have that it doesn't turn into the Sunnyland ghetto? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Judith?
Judith Green, Ellis Street, Bellingham. So, we know that people want to own homes in single-family neighborhoods. So, where's the wisdom in changing zoning so that there will be even less affordable single-family housing stock? I would like to address the issue about the toolkit. Basically, we, it's been approved like for two years, and there's not been one property that has chosen to use it, and I feel like the planning department is just desperate to see the toolkit used, and that they'll, well, they spent a lot of money, a lot of time, how many years, salaries, developing this, and it's not been successful. So, I think that there, they have a big stake in at least having it somewhere. We were promised that it was not developed for single-family neighborhoods, so since you have to have multi-family zoning to use it, let's just change the zoning in a neighborhood, my neighborhood, so we can use the toolkit. Seems to be the attitude of the planning department. I'm wondering about what the intent of the developer is, and this, David, you know, addressed this. Once the zoning is changed, there's no guarantee that this will be owner property. The developer seems to, from what I understand, has a new plan where he doesn't build houses to sell, he builds them to keep their, keep the ownership and use them as rentals. So, there, you know, there's the possibility that in my neighborhood, we could have a bunch of new rentals, all owned by Sunset Commons. It also concerns me that, you know, the neighborhood met with Mr. Edelstein many, many times, and he refused to make any commitment about what his intentions were in terms of numbers, what he really wanted on this property. So, but I find it interesting that he's willing to meet with the planning department, and I'm wondering, you know, does he think that he's going to make a deal with them, and then, then they'll support him? You know, is that, is that acceptable? When he refused to, you know, make any assertions at all in our meetings with him, he never came forth with any, with anything for us. So, I just remember him saying, you know, there was an issue about affordable housing, and he said, "Well, the more houses you let me build, the more affordable they'll be." That was a direct quote, I'm sure that other people can attest to that. So, I, I found it really interesting that Mr. Guyer chose to bring up the issue of your responsibilities on this commission, and I also believe that you've made a commitment to represent the best interests of the people of Bellingham. Not rich people, or developer people, or self-serving public employee people, but the people like us who live in the Sunnyland neighborhood. So, I would hope that you would keep that in mind as you make your decision about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Those are the people who signed up to speak. Are there any others who would like to come forward and speak?
Good evening. My name is John J. McGarrett. I live at 2729 North Park Drive. I'm the chair of the Cornwall Park Neighborhood Association. I'm glad to have a member here. The Cornwall Park Board has backed the Sunnyland proposal all along, and they've had our active support. Our neighborhood is right across the street from the site. We're directly impacted by the site and directly concerned with those impacts. But moreover, both the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association and Cornwall Park, with the city, worked with the hospital to develop out the transportation plan for the hospital, and that plan is calling for, I believe it was, another 20,000 or 30,000 car movements on Sunset. Jimmy Gannis, who owns the lot that's right on the freeway there, on the north side of the Sunset, but on the west side of the freeway, used to come to the council one time a year and at public speaking, begged the council to allow him to be rezoned commercial, saying that there was commercial everywhere else in the city on a freeway entrance and exit, and why wasn't he? Whereas Jimmy has bought land that they rights for a curb cut, and for commercial had already been sold off to the DOT, and he got the house at a much cheaper rate, but he didn't understand it nonetheless. The point is, most people don't understand that that area is the most heavily densely used traffic area in the city, and it's a very important, crucial artery. It's two lanes, it's cutting through a single-family neighborhood, it already has thousands of cars on it. When you stand at the freeway at James Street, just to the east of it, and look across to the traffic situation that's over there in front of the Sunset Mall over there, understand that the mess that you see over there was actually designed by planners. It's not accidental, it was done deliberately. It was done without foresight, or enough foresight, without a It was done without foresight, or enough foresight, without a doubt, and it wasn't intentional to make it a mess. But nonetheless, when they rezoned the church that was in the site that Lowe's is now, they went ahead with that design, the Barkley coming down to Sunset and then crossing over to Access James. I went down to the city council at that time, and I was the only person who spoke against that rezone. I spoke against that rezone because I didn't understand how it provided, it would provide for stacking before you get onto the freeway. My concern was that we'd have cars on the freeway trying to get off, they couldn't get off the freeway, cars on the Sunset were trying to get on the freeway, they were backing up into adjacent streets and up and down Sunset because there was not sufficient stacking room. I asked them to put the curb cuts for Lowe's and all those other places back there on Orleans, and not put curb cuts on Sunset between the freeway and Orleans, because to do so would to be destroy that stacking area. Now, why am I talking about that side rather than the other side? The point is, is that I'm worried, and the Cornwall Park Board is worried about replicating that on this side of the freeway, on the west side. Not necessarily with commercial, although we have the commercial, we have a for-profit hospital that has all those car movements already there. It's the most active commercial exit on the street. And our worry is, is that anything which breaks up that traffic pattern, that stops it, that might require a stoplight between Ellis and James Street, that traffic is already backing up to the DOT site. You create anything in there that will stall traffic during rush hour, you will back the traffic up Ellis towards the hospital. That's a very short street, there are two blocks. When that happens, it will then back up into Squawlicum. It's the way it's going to happen. I'm always amazed at how large-scale projects like this never seem to ever have any accompanying information about the transit and transportation problems that might be incumbent with it. It worries me a lot, particularly a large site like that, but also the adjacent neighbors, a number of the owners would like to upzone their property as well. And if we turn that into a large, dense, multi-family area, we're creating a large amount of cars parked there and moving on and off the property, and we will have an immense problem accessing the hospital, something that the neighborhood associations have been trying to work out with the city and the hospital for a good number of years, close to 20. The first time Cornwall Park dealt with this site was back in 1994. I was chair then, and in 94, it was, there was changes to the zoning in that area, and I was working with Kathy Bell on that, and I've been working on it ever since, as far as what was going to happen. And we're really consistently clear about this. We've accepted the expansion of the hospital. The city accepted the responsibility to maintain our neighborhood, to maintain the access to the hospital, and to act in a reasonable way in regards to that access to the hospital. And I think making this area multi-family is not a reasonable approach to the problem. When it was bought by Sunset Commons, they bought a lot that was divided into lots of 10,000 and 20,000 square feet. They bought it where it is, it wasn't brought in from some other area, this is the area, this is the conditions, this is the problems, this is the obligations and duty of the city to maintain the access to that hospital. We support infill, we supported and brought about the whole Fountain District rezone. We worked for three years before the city even considered the possibility of having an urban village there. And so what I'm saying that is, because we're not opposed to a higher density than 10,000 or 20,000 square feet, we'd like to keep it in single-family and keep it at a reasonable level, and it'll maintain that area for everybody. And I appreciate your listening to me, and thank you.
Thank you, John.
Miki McDermid. I live in Sunnyland. The residents of Sunnyland have an intense desire to preserve the character of the single-family neighborhood they live in. They have made their largest investment of their lives in the area they chose because they were led to believe that the zoning would stay single-family residences. We maintain our homes and yards, raise our children, assist our elderly neighbors, and keep an eye out for each other because we know each other, and many of us look for just such a place for years before we found Sunnyland. If you choose to rezone Sunnyland as a multi-family, Bellingham will lose a valuable character neighborhood that honors historical architecture and design. You will alter the feel and desirability of this popular and sought-after area. Sunnyland's amendment plan increases density, but in a thoughtful way that will preserve the character and what makes Bellingham itself the unique and cherished city it is. Half of Sunnyland's residential area is already zoned as multi-family duplex. Sunnyland will have sufficient density in the near future within its borders. Sunnyland Neighborhood has made due diligence to participate in all the steps set before it to amend their neighborhood plan. I would be willing to negotiate to have our amendment modified and to remove the dual homes along Sunset Drive, to help with the city's request to simplify their jobs, if that is what is necessary to reach a decision. We are agreeable to the 2028 BMC Code 060070 design standards on our single-family detached medium-density zoning in light of concern for easier administration. Please support and recommend that Sunnyland's amendment go through. Please support local neighborhoods and the history of Bellingham's neighborhoods. Support what we love about Bellingham. Please don't look outside for ideas of what Bellingham should look like and be in some alternative future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing. Staff, have any comments before we get into our discussions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few, I think, and then maybe Moshe or Darby will have some comments as First, I guess we should address the procedural issues and the section of the code that Mr. Guyer referenced regarding, you know, who can apply for a site-specific rezone. What he didn't show you was the very next section of the code that comes after the section that he referenced, Section C of that same part of the code, specifically authorizes the city council to docket any site-specific or non-site-specific proposal that they believe meets the docketing criteria, and that's how this came to be. So we have discussed this with the city attorney's office. We believe we are in compliance with the code. We believe we should proceed. If the property owners believe that that's not correct, then they will have the opportunity to appeal any decision if and when a decision is finally made by the city council. I know he asked you to terminate this proposal. You don't have the authority to do that. You could recommend to the council something along those lines if you chose to, but this thing was docketed, it was legally docketed by the city council, we're processing it, we're here. We were hoping that the property owners would provide some, either review of the neighborhood's proposal, or review of the staff proposal, or some suggestions of their own about what should occur on the property. We have repeatedly asked for that information over the years and haven't received it. So I don't want you to think that there are procedural issues that should keep you from doing your job. With respect to the staff proposal, we often present alternatives to a proposal to the commission. You know we do that, we do that for council. If, what we tried to do in this instance was develop a proposal that kept the spirit of the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association's proposal, and yet met citywide goals that we're responsible for. The differences between the two proposals Darby went through, I won't go through that again, we don't believe they're that significant, but they are important. They're important in terms of accommodating growth in the city, and they're important in terms of administration of our code. With respect to the transportation issues that Mr. McGarrett raised, any development of the site, whether it's the Sunnyland's proposal, or staff's proposal, or the property owner's proposal, or something different, has to meet transportation concurrency requirements as the development is proposed. If there is not capacity on the roadways that are adjacent to the site to handle the traffic, improvements are required, and as I said, that would be true of any proposal, whether it's the neighborhoods, or the staffs, or something different. The question of rentals was raised. We don't have any control over whether or not the homes that are eventually built there in whatever form are rentals or not. If the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association proposal is approved and that style of development is built, those houses could be rentals. There's, there's no control over that. It's up to the property owner's discretion. I think that is all of the issues that I wanted to address at this point. Does other staff have anything? No? Okay. We're here to answer questions, if you have any.
Other questions from the commission?
I have a question for Greg. Going back to 2012, when this, when the, was first made application for the rezone, in the, in the Bellingham Municipal Code, it states that only a property owner or authorized agent may submit an application. That was Section B. Section C, all amendments, both site-specific and non-site-specific amendments may be added. So going back to 2012, we had three proposals that were brought in front of the planning commission to be docketed. Were those submitted? Was the application submitted in a proper fashion? Was it following procedure to even have them submit the application?
Yeah, it was. And all three of those proposals went to the city council, and they chose to docket the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association's proposal.
All the fees were, all the fees were paid?
No. Once the, once the application was docketed, we didn't require any fees. We've set that precedent with neighborhood associations when they've brought forward proposals for amendments. We did that years ago. We haven't required the neighborhood associations to pay the fees, and we didn't in this case as well. We did the same thing with York, we did the same thing with all neighborhood associations. There were a dozen or so amendments that were processed that came from neighborhood associations, and we did not require them to pay the fees.
Other questions of staff?
Yes. Just for some clarity, are we in the middle of a procedure here on docketing and consideration, or is this something that is freshly starting? I mean, to me, that would make a significant difference, whether, if there's anything on the table that now you say is being amended, or is the owner still free to come up with a plan and come back and deal with the planning commission and city council on whatever they might choose to do based on the default position now?
We're, we're processing the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association's proposal. We're going through the legislative process, looking at their proposal. That's what we're doing. We're not introducing anything else at this point. We're looking at the proposal from the neighborhood association that was docketed.
But if I look at who should be making the proposal to begin with, it seems like the owner needs to have something in there that people are reacting to, as opposed to the neighborhood association coming up with their own plan for somebody's property without their consent.
Well, that, that ship has sailed. That's what happened. The neighborhood association submitted the proposal, it was docketed by city council, so we're taking it through the legislative review process. There was also, there was also a proposal at that same time from the property owner, and the council chose not to docket that and not have it reviewed.
So instead of kind of wiping things out, then it leaves things somewhat in limbo, and we're, we're picking this up midstream. Is that correct?
No.
No?
No. We are, this is the beginning of the legislative review process. So we review the proposal as submitted, you submit your recommendations to the city council, they'll do the same. This is the beginning of the legislative review process. The docketing process is separate, and that already occurred.
Well, I guess I'm still missing that, how, how are we doing this without something coming from the owner?
The city council has the authority to docket any proposal at any time, and that's what they did.
Even without cooperation from the owner?
Yes.
Interesting.
Other questions from the commission? I have a couple. It seems that the RM duplex zone raises a whole bunch of red flags with the neighborhood. In 50 words or less, can you explain why the city's alternative said RM duplex?
I can try, and then maybe others can chime in as well. We, we recommended the, we thought the RM designation, first of all, it brings in the toolkit options. So the options that are listed, that Darby went through, those are only possible under the RM zoning. Okay? It also brings in the design standards that go with those housing forms. Under single-family zoning, there are no design guidelines. So those are the two primary reasons that we recommend the RM zoning. What controls on the site is the density, obviously. Even though you might have, under the staff proposal, you might have smaller lots, you might have some attached housing, you still have the density limit of the 34 units is what controls on the site. So those are the two primary reasons.
Yeah, and that's what we did. When we looked at the neighborhood's proposal versus staff's alternative, we looked, we looked for similarities. Both have detached, single-family homes with smaller and smaller, as well as, they were looking at detached. They were also looking at attached, single-family, which is very similar to duplex. So we were trying to utilize the existing code provisions that we already had, but the only way that we could do that was through the RM duplex zoning, because the toolkit specifically is not allowed currently, generally in the single-family zone. And so that was the whole purpose behind it. We're not looking at all the housing forms in the toolkit, just six of them. That's already addressed in the toolkit.
Thank you. I just wanted to have that in the record, real specific, so that anybody can go back and, and, and look and, and see. My second question is kind of probably a dumb one. Why does the city have, have their proposal labeled as an alternative rather than an amendment to, or a modification of the neighborhood proposal?
It could. We thought it provided more clear information. I mean, we could have said, "We're proposing an amendment to their proposal," and do a strikeout of what they're doing. We thought it'd be easier to convey as just an alternative option. You know, we offer amendments several times when we go through the comprehensive rezone process, and so basically, you can think of it generally as an amending what they were doing with a similar proposal that we believe meets the intent of the comprehensive plan, goals, and policies.
Thank you. I just, I'm a dumb Norski, so you have to lay things out real specific for me. Other questions from the commission? Phyllis?
Yes, just taking that a step further, when you're saying amendment, you mean amendment to the neighborhood plan, not amendment to the owner's plan?
Well, the recommendation is to deny the Sunnyland Neighborhood proposal and go with the alternative recommendation, is what we're doing. It's basically, we chose that path, but typically, you know, we can offer amendments, depending whether minor, significant, or other options as we go through processes, so that planning commission can evaluate each one.
But it's still not to who owns the property, it's to the neighborhood association that you're responsible for. It's to the neighborhood association that you're responding to.
That was the proposal that was docketed.
Yeah, okay. So the owner really doesn't have anything going on here at all at the moment, because some communication breakdown somewhere? Is that sort of fair?
Yeah. I can only tell you the part of the process that I've been involved in, which has not been all of it certainly, but we have reached out to the property owners on a number of vacations, trying to find out what their plans for the property were, if any, and haven't had any luck getting any specifics.
Is there some urgency to finding that out? I mean, can they not just sit on the land and wait for some opportunity to develop it? I mean, is there any reason that we're interested in moving this along so quickly, as opposed to they just bought some land and they want to sit on it for some number of years and then take action, which seems to me the perfect right of an owner?
We're here because the council docketed this proposal in the annual process.
Oh, okay, got it.
And so we are processing it in the annual process. That's why we're here.
Thank you. I think I'm...
Other questions? Jeff?
This is a question to refresh my memory, but also to perhaps help some of the commissioners that weren't here before. My recollection of the process before was we had three proposals in front of us, and we had to pick which one was we were going to recommend for docketing. And the discussion at that time, we spent a lot of time talking about housing forms and density, and a number of factors, transportation, other things. And I believe the vote was based on trying to pick what plan to start the discussion on. So we had three competing proposals, and we forwarded a recommendation for the owner's proposal, not as an outright endorsement of the specifics of their plan, but procedurally, if I recall, it most closely matched sort of the discussion we had, and we felt that that should be the starting point of the discussion. And council flipped that, and basically, you know, that was before council, and they said, "Oh, well, no, use this as a starting point." Similarly, in that period of time, I believe there was a lot of discussion about housing forms, about the inapplicability of the infill toolkit to single-family. That was written for single-family, it got approved for multifamily, but it really didn't address the issue of the continuum between a 1920s style of development, which is what you have in parts of Sunnyland, versus the objectives of affordable housing and smaller houses and cluster development, still with a single-family flavor, but not strictly the same as the rest of the neighborhood. I think we had all that discussion, and there was a desire to tackle that at some point and actually have that conversation. And now we're back here, sort of having that conversation, but the underlying issue of the, I hate to use the term infill toolkit, but basically, the toolkit for single-family development has never been tackled. And I'm a little bit disappointed, because that seems like that's the crux of the issue, is what housing forms are appropriate for this and at what density. And we're having that discussion without any kind of proposal on the table from the owner. And is this correct? Is my recollection of how we got here roughly in line with?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm a little frustrated with that, I have to admit, and I think the timing is a little awkward, but I'll save the editorial comments until we get to the discussion. I just wanted to confirm that my recollection was in line.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, well, then I guess we need a motion before us. I'd like to move to recommend denial of both recommendations and start the discussion on that.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to deny both the Sunnyland Neighborhood Association proposal and the city staff proposal.
Phyllis, you seconded that?
Yes, thank you.
This, I...
So now, we're up for discussion. Far away.
To start the discussion on it, you know, the point that Jeff brought up is when we originally had three proposals in front of the Planning Commission for docketing, the idea was that it was an idea, not a formal proposal. And in the rezone criteria, the burden of the proof to meet the comprehensive plan requirements is on the owner, who's on the applicant. Here, we don't necessarily have a plan. We hold the developer to a completely different standard than we hold a neighborhood association. If it was a developer bringing this proposal, he'd have to show, he'd have to invest a lot of money showing housing forms, types, road configurations, traffic impact, noise impact. He'd have to pay for the original application, and then we docket a neighborhood association that does not have to pay, and then doesn't have to provide a plan. And we're talking about personal property, real property, and the owner's not even here to represent themselves or even a stakeholder in this process. Something's wrong with this process.
This has been going on for seven years, correct?
Other comments?
Well, I have to admit, I lived in three houses in that neighborhood over the past 30 years, and I actually do respect the visceral response of the neighborhood to the term multifamily, and I understand where that's coming from. And if I had my druthers, I would actually combine the two proposals. I'd include an expansion of housing forms that are allowed under the multifamily designation, but I would have it be single-family. But I don't have any idea whether that's acceptable to develop or not, or at what densities for clustering development. So I'm in a quandary, and I have a bit of an issue with trying to resolve that sort of detail at this point, not having a developer proposal in front of us, and also knowing that nobody's going to be happy here. There's no way, you know, I understand the multifamily issue, and that when people hear that, they think about a three-story, 20-unit apartment building, and I don't think anybody's talking about that, but that's what gets the attention. So what we're really talking about is multifamily, the toolkit designation allows an attached, what is essentially duplex, as a single-family designation. And multifamily allows a duplex, but there's a world difference depending on which designation the property has. And I don't know how we can really resolve that, and neither one could be rented. So I'm having a bit of a problem here, and I would actually support a proposal to essentially table these, which I guess means rejecting them, but to specifically ask the City Council to direct staff and the Planning Commission to address the issue of what kind of development using some of the toolkit forms is appropriate in single-family zones, and actually have that discussion, and then come back to the discussion of what density is appropriate, and what transportation impacts are appropriate, and what housing form, what parts of the toolkit were appropriate. But I don't know how else to solve it. That's my initial response to your motion.
Other comments? Steve?
Well, looking back at the efforts that have transpired to reach some kind of an agreement, I find it hard to believe, listening tonight, that really we're pretty darn close. We're close, what, six units apart on density? And, you know, again, the multifamily thing pops up. Well, there's going to be one that's going to be 30 stories high and going to have so many units. We've had a planning charrette, we brought in a third party to sit and try to recommend some kind of action, but everybody's digging their heels in. And we've been asked to do a function that's, that apparently is legal, that the City Council is wanting to, has docketed this, and we have to respond to it. Again, I just don't understand why there are so many problems here. Character of the neighborhood, you saw the designs, the designs can be compatible. It would add a whole lot of value to East Illinois Street and Sunset to have a real good-looking project. I have the question, where's, other than Bill, where's the owner? You know, where's his representative to come in here and say, "Well, I either agree or disagree. I'm never going to build anything, because I'm going to hold out for X number of units." So I'm really confused on what direction to go here, and I appreciate the neighbors coming in. My gosh, we've got a ton of comments, but I don't think the comments, the comments are more of panic and scared vice really analyzing this thing and looking at the various different housing types. And believe me, it would clean up Illinois Street, I think. It would really add some value left east and west on East Illinois Street if a project similar to this. But then again, you know, I don't know what the owner's going to do, you know? Where is he? He's in Europe, I guess, or wherever. So I can understand your motion. I really can. I don't think we have a real clear-cut direction to go anyway on this. I would hate to, you know, Bill's comments about, you know, someone draws a circle around your neighborhood and said, "I come home and it's rezoned, and this is what I have to do on it." I've got a real problem with that. Being a private property advocate, I find it hard to believe that would ever happen. As of right now, I came here to support item number, proposal number two, but right now I'm in doubt about that. And I can understand where Garrett is coming from. I can understand where Jeff is coming from. There's a lot of questions here, just a lot of questions and doubt as to us pushing this thing out and giving a recommendation, thumbs up or thumbs down to City Council. I think City Council would tear it apart as we would push it forward at this particular time. Thank you.
Phyllis?
I would just like to, can you reiterate that without, it seems like we usually react to things that would be a specific proposal for some design, and we're asked for none of the above, the owner's not involved. And being a property owner myself, I can appreciate the fact that I wouldn't want someone pushing me to come up with some property I was just sitting on for the moment. And it should be the right of the property owner to be able to sit on property for whatever period of time. I mean, I don't know what would change that, as opposed to telling them what they can do with it later. Let them come up with a plan and go through all the hoops, and the plan will be back here, I would presume. But I just don't feel comfortable taking somebody else's idea for somebody's property and imposing it on them when it may have nothing, have little or nothing to do with what they intend later. And they may not be focusing on it at the moment. They may be focusing on other projects or other things, so they don't have the time nor the intent to deal with this project at the moment. I don't know that for a fact, I'm just wildly guessing.
I have a quick question. So the neighborhood has this proposal, and it's not, or is it or isn't not, instigated by them hearing something that the developer wants to do something? Because it seems like that's usually where the neighborhood gets upset or has an interest, or they don't like that the property's sitting there vacant, or... I'm kind of curious where the motivation came, you know, who was suggesting this? The city saying this would be a good idea because the zoning needs to change, like it's time, because there was a zoning need, right, for change, and then the neighborhood got upset, or... I'm just kind of curious, like, the initial motivation or initial start of it all?
All I can tell you is that the initial proposal came from the neighborhood. Maybe Patrick can fill you in on how this originally started?
I can do that. Allow me to...
Couple minutes, Patrick.
Back in 2006, we had heard that the Washington Department of Transportation was going to sell this property. And when we found out that it had been sold in 2007, we immediately contacted Greg Hinton and Dave Edelstein and said, "Let's talk about what we think the appropriate private-use zoning for the publicly zoned property would be." In other words, Sunset Commons LLC bought property that they knew there was no private-use zoning on, because the city immediately puts default zoning onto the site, this 20,000-square-foot zoning, and through a public process, it would be determined what the appropriate private-use zoning would be. And that's where the neighborhood association got involved. We are a stakeholder in the area, and we put forward what we thought would be the appropriate private-use zoning. And it was not because we were threatened with something that was a 20-foot apartment building or something like that. It was we knew that in a situation like this, most often, the City Council will rezone this public-use land similar to the surrounding zoning. And we wanted to follow through on that. We came up with a proposal that's similar to the surrounding-use zoning, and that's how the neighborhood got involved.
Thank you. That really helps, because basically what that tells me is that there's a proactive neighborhood. You guys saw this, we're maybe putting the chicken before the egg, but we're here. This is what we are going to go through once the developer came to us with the proposal, then we would have gone through this whole process. We just went through this whole process before the proposal.
And we are not requiring the builder to build anything. In other words, he's not under any pressure to build something. We're just putting zoning in place.
Back to the mic?
And we're not requiring a site plan.
Patrick, I have one question. If you're not, you know, pushing Sunset to do anything right now, what is the harm in letting the property stay at the 20,000-square-foot default zoning until there is an actual proposal from them that will go through this entire process?
Okay. The default zoning was intended to be temporary.
Correct.
Okay? And 20,000-square-foot lots do not comply with the State's Growth Management Act. You can't have lots that big in a city like Bellingham. I mean, new lots. I know we have older neighborhoods with 20,000-square-foot, but you can't create new 20,000-square-foot lots. I believe it would be against the Growth Management Act. The reason that we would like to get the zoning settled is because we would like some certainty as to what can take place on that site. We're living with not knowing what that outcome is going to be, and that's what we're seeking. We're seeking some certainty as to what the zoning will be on that site, what can take place on that site.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Guyer for Sunset Commons. I just want to make a couple of quick comments. If there was that big a concern by the city as an entity to control this site in 2005, 2006, when DOT put it up for sale, they could have purchased it. I mean, they could have been an active developer in it, so that hasn't happened. The other thing I'll comment, and I respect Mr. Alcott, we've done several things together. I will, however, disagree with his interpretation of paragraph C. I would really hope that you look at that closely, because as you cite here, it says amendments, both site-specific, non-specific amendments may be added to the annual review. Point being, where does the amendment originate? Where's the originating point of the amendment? And that's the controlling language above, site-specific and non-site-specific. Some entity has to originate. Now, if the converse argument is that this was originated by the council, hallelujah, I understand that, because the council specifically does not have the authority to initiate a site-specific rezone. They are not the owners. Now, Mr. McKee is correct. RS 20,000 doesn't work, and it doesn't work in our city. We know that. So we go to other things. Where we are lagging right now, and you've worked on this extensively, is in the infill toolkit and other housing forms that we wish to see across the city are currently not being built, because the infill toolkit, then coupled with the other subdivision requirements and codes, don't provide a mechanism to get to the forms that Commissioner Brown has talked about, and you as designers know this. And so from Sunset Commons' perspective, what's the rush? I mean, there's code amendments, designed forms that will take place over the next five, 10 years, and they're perfectly willing to wait that and to go through the next comprehensive plan change. I mean, we can look at things as have changed over the past 20 years, but what applies to this site, because there are utilities in this site that specifically prevent reaching the density that's supposed in the staff report. There's specific design issues that would prevent that density from being achieved. Sunset Commons is, you know, "We'll approach at the point in time when it meets within our business plan, and then we can meet what we're trying to achieve. Now is not the time, nor is this proposal." Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments?
Garrett? One more comment, you know, before this goes to vote, just from a fundamental...
Just from a fundamental philosophical stance on this, the process should be property owner purchase the property, it has a default zoning of 20,000 square feet. They should have the right to keep it at that density. If they want to make an application to rezon the property, the burden of the proof is on the applicant to show that it meets the comprehensive plan criteria, that it's not injurious to the neighborhood. It's the burden of proof is on the applicant. Therefore, they're proposing some plan showing housing forms, density, street orientation, all the different things that would go into a detailed proposal of what they're going to do. And then public input would be brought into that and a modification would be made through the legislative process and it would be voted on. This is a complete deviation from that process. This is an application made by a stakeholder, yes, not an owner. And I don't see any rush or any point in pushing something through that has no consent from the person paying the property taxes, paying the holding cost on the property, until they provide something that shows that they can meet a conciliatory plan with the neighborhood that meets the zoning regulations that we could actually look at and evaluate. And until that point comes, I don't see any point in just pushing it through, just to, just to be done with it, just to capitulate. The process needs to follow the proper course. This is not the proper course.
Question for staff.
Oh, yeah.
Is it true that a site-specific rezon would have to come before us with preliminary street layouts and, and building types, et cetera, et cetera? Or would it come basically similar to the Sunset Neighborhood Association or the city's alternative?
Yeah, it would mostly be up to the applicant to decide how much detail they wanted to provide, but if they just wanted to propose a zoning district like we've done or like the neighborhood did, that meets the minimum requirements of submittal as well. So it's not guaranteed that you would get a site plan with the kind of detail that you're talking about. It's, it's, sometimes that happens and, excuse me, sometimes it doesn't. It's hard for a property owner to, I mean, you're talking about developing, spending a lot of money to develop a site plan without knowing whether or not it's going to be approved or, so we've seen it happen both ways.
Thank you. Again, dumb Norski asking dumb questions.
Does that clarify what you just said, though? Because that, to me, basically says that it's, that kind of negates what you just said.
Well, in this situation, in order to get anything pushed through, when you have this much community involvement, they're going to have to reach some sort of agreement. To me, it seems like that one of the big stickers is multifamily. And with this designation having a duplex, the neighborhood's against duplex or multifamily zoning. But the applicant, when he made his docketing request, said that he would be amenable to dropping the density from 50 units to 28 units or 35 units, whatever he said it was. So there was some, you know, concessions being made. Now, there could be a precedent for a higher density. It could be single-family. If the homeownership wants to be maintained, why wouldn't, why couldn't a proposal be put together that had single-family on smaller lots? We just, we don't have a plan. We literally have, just have a default for, for, for density. And it's not by the property owner. And so in order to push anything through this process, they would have to have some level of detail, otherwise it would just get denied.
Jeff?
So, excuse me, I, I want to float a trial balloon before I make a motion, or actually a friendly amendment. So as I had somewhat alluded to before, I really believe that we need to tackle the housing forms and single-family zones as a global issue, particularly for the city core neighborhoods that had the downzone over the past number of years, and figure out what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, and have some indication of how infill's being handled that way. And then be able to come back and evaluate a proposal based on what the density is and having an idea of housing forms and all that sort of thing. And at that point, the word multifamily doesn't have to be involved at all, because it's not mixing these, the issue of housing forms automatically bumping into multifamily. And I want to be responsive to the neighborhood, and I understand the time and effort they've put into it and the concern they have over the term, the M-word. And I would like to see, you know, what, if there's any traction for requesting the council to direct further development of that concept as part of a move to table these or reject these. And to actually take that bull by the horns a little bit in the work plan and then be able to see if that comes back to the commission and we can resolve that issue. And then we'll at least have a template in the future that a developer and a community, a neighborhood community would know what the rules would be for housing forms within a single-family neighborhood and would have this discussion within the context of a single-family development, perhaps instead of this muddied mix of housing forms and multifamily. And so if, if there seems to be some traction that maybe that's a good idea or modified, I could make a friendly amendment to request the council to ask Planning Department and us to address that in the future.
Any, any response?
I think it's a good amendment, and I think the property owner should have the right to, to wait for that development to happen.
I guess I'm gonna, I'm, I'm not on the same page with everyone right now. So I'm, I feel like there's been a lot of time, money, energy put into a process, and it isn't the way that we've seen it done before. We've, however, I feel like it's pretty clear we're six units off, essentially, from coming to some kind of agreement here. And I feel like it's kind of frustrating to see a process get stuck on something like this. I totally respect what you, what your, your concerns and what you're saying, but it's been going on for seven years. This isn't a new thing. This didn't, this didn't just happen yesterday. This is a long process that a lot of, the property owners had lots of opportunity to be involved in this process. So it's not, that's, I don't feel like that's the missing piece here. It's a rezon situation. It will actually help the neighborhood to have some movement here and ultimately to protect, I mean, there's, when I looked through this and I saw everything that I've seen, no one wants it in their backyard. No one wants it in their front yard. I don't want it in my front or backyard either. I totally understand that. At the same time, right now, personally, I have development going on right in front of me that I didn't want, and I've had to accept it and it actually is adding value to where I'm living, or I can move too. You know, there's a lot of options, but I think with this rezon, there's a lot of value here for actually the neighborhood and the city and the developer. So I'm, I'm actually very much in support of proposal two, to move it forward. And, you know, if the developer wants to appeal it, he can. If city council doesn't want to deal with it and not do infill, they can. But I feel like we're at a place where we can move it forward, and so that's where I'm standing.
Phyllis?
Okay, yeah, the, the six units off, just to make sure, has nothing to do with what, what I gather came from the owner. That's between two non-owner entities. And unless I'm misunderstanding this, the seven years is because of urgency on the parts of the non-owner people who are involved in this, and so there's been a lot of energy that's gone into it certainly, but it hasn't been the owner. And I, I think that we're setting a real bad precedence to come in and decide that we can decide what that private property is going to be used for without the owner participating in that discussion. Now, whether they're in Europe or, or just choose to not do anything for 10, 20 years. I mean, they have the right to do that. And so this urgency thing is by the non-owners. I don't think that the owner feels urgency to make a decision. And, and of course, once an owner opens his or her mouth and says, "I'm going to do this," then, then, you know, makes front page, you know, news, and it's hard for them to backtrack. So I think people have learned to keep their mouth closed on a lot of things until they have an idea in mind. And I'm just really concerned about if we take off on a situation where somehow, because of people's sense of urgency, they have taken over the rights of the owner and imposed things on them. I mean, what we're talking about here are, are the maximum limits, I presume, of what he could do. That's going to be imposed on him when he comes with a project. And it doesn't have to be full detail, you know, you know, horizontal and everything else. They can have, they could come in for a proposal of how to zone, and who knows how this is going to open up in the next few years? And because exactly as Jeff's saying, the city is working on all of this stuff right now. It is in transition, and we don't know how that's going to come out. So maybe voting on this will send us off in a direction where nobody really wanted to go if they didn't know it was going to be in the basket, you know, two years from now.
Okay, let's get back to Jeff's trial balloon. Is, is there support on the commission for that?
Yes.
We'll need at least, we'll need at least four for a friendly amendment.
Well, I would like to, oh.
Yep, no, I would support it.
Yeah, I think it's a good amendment.
Do I need to restate it?
Yeah, for the record.
Okay. Well, the friendly amendment would be to request that the council direct staff to bring a proposal to the planning commission that addresses the housing types, that a plan for taking some of the infill toolkit housing forms and addressing how those housing types might be integrated into single-family zoning in the future. Is that sufficiently?
Yes.
Second.
We just heard the friendly amendment. We've had a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. Okay, now we're back to the, to the motion on the table, which was to deny both proposals here tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any more discussion on this? Okay. Well, then we're down to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five to one. This will go back to city council, denied with the friendly amendment directing city to actually put stuff into the, the single-family zoning that would allow the kinds of development that the neighborhood would like to see. And as it is right now, it will stay at 20,000-square-foot density, at least from our perspective.
Can I say one last thing?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly, we saw here tonight some negotiations and some compromise. I would hope down the road that you take back to the Neighborhood Association, you take to the owners, that negotiation and conversations work. If you want to get down to work, let's get something done, agree on it. We'll work on the infill toolkit, hopefully, get the doubt off of that tool that's never been used in this city yet, and we can move forward together and get some things done in Bellingham. That's all.
Okay, so now we get down to the mundane stuff. So if you would like to leave, do so kind of quietly and we'll continue on. General business for the commission. Anybody got anything? No? Is there a director's report?
Um, well, I think...
Oh, no, he got fired. I mean, he left. No, he's going to leave.
Yes, Director Thomas has accepted another position in another city, and his last day here will be a week from tomorrow. I will be serving as the interim director while we do a search for a new planning director. That typically takes, for, for a position like that, four to six months from the time you start until you actually get the person in the chair. So that's what you can expect for the time being. One other point I'd like to make, there are a couple of toolkit projects that are going on. They're in various stages of review, and so I will get the specifics on that and report back to you at your next meeting.
Next week.
Next week.
Yeah.
Hey, Greg?
Yeah?
I, I don't know, you know, how this, you know, when these recommendations go to city council, I mean, I just really can't understate how important what Jeff's amendment was. I think the problem that we're seeing is that our land use code and our development regulations are just too restrictive to meet the infill goals that the city has. We have unique properties like this, you know, the city, planning staff, community development, they want more infill. There's concerns with, you know, single-family, you know, people live in an established neighborhood, they want to, they want to maintain single-family character, but you don't have any infill toolkit options available for single-family land use designation. It's just, it's too restrictive. If that was an option available, I would have think, based on what the, you know, the developer had to say when he docketed, that they could have come to some sort of consensus. They're looking for more density, more housing. I don't know that multifamily's like the key trigger there, you know, and probably not even right for that site. But it's just, they don't have the option. So, I mean, we've talked about working on this. It's huge. It would make a big difference.
Yes, we will pass along your comments and the urgency with which you have made them, if you would, if one of you would like to come to the hearing.
The problem is that, that city council is a political body, and they got enough heat from single-family zoned people that they purposely did not include the toolkit in single-family, period. It's, it was a political football, and they decided that they were not going to make the hard choice. I think that possibly having some select portions of the toolkit for single-family, maybe that would help get through this stumbling block. But it's going to be, it's going to be a, a political hot potato, getting more density into single-family zones using the toolkit. Okay, next scheduled meeting is one week, June 19th, 2014. Is there anything else from anybody? Nothing for the good of the order? Well, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.